Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Limbo?
Yes.
Mrs. Stratten?
Yes.
Mrs. Krapp?
Yes.
And Mr. McEnroe.
Yes. I'd like to call the order of the February 16, 2010 meeting of the State Board of Education. Mr. Board Secretary, has this meeting been published in accordance with the opening public meeting?
Yes, it has, Mr. McEnroe.
Can everybody please stand and do me a place? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please. There you go. Now, this evening at the meeting, I just want to introduce that we have the fifth grade class from the upper elementary school that's come to observe the meeting this evening. Because next meeting, the March 2 meeting, they will be acting as the Board of Education. And the administrators will be sitting up here in a dais going through an agenda. So, I want to thank all of them for being here tonight. We're very proud of you, and we're certainly looking forward to next month's meeting. Mrs. Brady, is anything you want to say about the Let the Children Lead program?
Basically, I wanted to say that we have a beautiful project here. These are the children who wrote essays so that they could apply to the position of all of our work. It's very hard to judge. Mr. Gentile, Miss Agnew, and myself struggled these names. It was really hard, but I hope we've covered everyone. I wanted to say thank you to the teachers in our school because they were the ones who promoted the essay writing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brady, and Mrs. Agnew, and Mr. Gentile for your work with the program. Thank you very much. I also want to introduce in the audience, Ms. Ernie Reed. If you could please stand up, be recognized. Mr. Reed is the newly appointed Board of Education representative from the Borough Council, and welcome to the meeting. Dr. Alfonso, do you have any presentations?
Yes, we do. Mr. DeAndre?
We're going to do a quick presentation to start the early draft of the budget of 2010-11. I realize that people are sitting behind and there are some -- everything that we're talking about, you can either give my office a call, we can certainly hand out some more of these programs around.
In case, unless you want to move up. Generally, we don't have this many people at Board of Education seated. That's why we have the screen up here. If you want to come up, those in the back to see the slides, or you can work off the page.
Ms. Paul, is there any way we can kind of slide the projector this way so that people can see?
We're wired. I can't move anything.
You can't move it?
No, because it's taped. Everything is taped down.
Yes, ma'am.
It was a little unusual. Usually, you have the tables over there, but if you'd like to get up and see what we're talking about, we will certainly try to re-brief. This year is a very difficult year putting the budget together for 2010-11. Five reasons, as you've been reading in the paper, is we're not really sure how much money we're going to get as far as revenue is concerned in order to actually construct a budget. It's very difficult if you don't know how much money you're going to get from the federal government or from the state government. And the major concern that we have right now is that particular part of it. But what I'm going to go through, and if you go to the next slide, the budget preparation, always we try to go through the administration, the staff, and the public. At the end of this presentation, you're going to see, we've already made about $4.5 million in cuts. And if you have a copy of that, you can see that we've really extensively gone through this budget already to try to get it as close to the best as possible because we don't really know what's going to really happen as far as the State Department is concerned. This is the first of many budget meetings we will be having. The PIC meeting, there was a budget meeting on February 8, which we started it off. And then there'll be two more meetings, definitely March 23 and March 30. The 23 is the budget adoption, and the 30 is a public hearing. And those are tentative dates right now. We will definitely get out the actual dates once we get our information from the State Department, which we haven't got. Reasons for the increase, we do this slide every year, but we've kind of changed it up a little bit. We actually put percentages. We took them right out of the budget. Special education tuition costs is about 5.34 percent of our budget. Utilities are about 2.52 percent. Transportation is 5.15. Salaries, 75.8 percent of our budget. Most of our budget of the $75 million comes from salaries. Maintenance of buildings is about 1.5. Our budget is pretty well fixed at 90 percent. So, really, we have 10 percent of our budget, whether it be equipment, supplies, so on and so forth. We get to try to determine whether we're not -- we can kind of manipulate those numbers. Major appropriations still in the budget. This is very important because if we get cut real hard, some of these areas could get hit. Number one, and we sat with the parents, and the parents ranked these items in order. The number one thing they'd never want to see come out of the budget is all-day kindergarten. The second thing is courtesy busing for elementary schools. The third, new teachers to maintain current class sizes. The fourth, technology upgrades and infrastructure. And the fifth would be workbooks, consumables, and other supplies. And they ranked them. We asked them, from 1 to 5, which are the most important things that you think should be kept into the budget? And the number one item and issue always comes up to be all-day kindergarten. And this came from the parents. This was not from me. This was not from the board. This is directly from the parents. Next slide. Staffing instruction. What we did is we broke it down to about $900,000. And this is what's in the budget, ladies and gentlemen, that maintains our existing statutory and maintains our existing budget right now. It does not bring us to the next level. It just maintains it. And you can see, textbooks, new, $100,000. Remember, we have 6,000 children in this district, all taking approximately 6 to 7 courses. Reading series K to 6, the workbooks are $220,000, and that is only to maintain. Then you have new special education program teachers, too, $90,000. New special education program paraprofessionals, 4, $60,000. Computer technician, $35,000. Maintenance personnel, HVAC person and a regular, two of them, $75,000. Middle school language arts teacher, $45,000. High school PE and science teachers, that's $90,000. Elementary teacher, which is $45,000. And health benefits for all those individuals, $135. You add them all up, it's $895,000. There is no mention of technology in this budget, i.e. smart boards, projectors, computers, et cetera. Our full appropriation, or how much this budget is going up, we said it at the last meeting, is $990,000. That's a little over 1 percent of the budget from last year. So, it's a very streamlined budget, which if you look at it, $900,000 of the new increases, you're looking right at it. So, for the most part, it's just to maintain the existing budget. Next slide. We're not doing a whole lot of facility work this year. This is where we made up some of our money. Roof replacement at the middle school is $960,000. I don't know if you've been in the middle school, but if you stand by the cafeteria, you probably could go swimming on a good hard rain. So, it's really necessary for us to finish that roof and to upgrade those areas. And then there are some small items in the elementary school, whether it be gym floors, refinished instructional area floors, rug replacements, and some painting of classrooms. Next slide. What we tried to do here is just to give you a little idea of, one more, just to give you an idea of how the enrollments are going up. Not drastically, a little over 110, 115 children from last year, but you can see, our enrollment's almost at 6,000. When I came here, it was about 57, 5600. So, 10 years, it's gone up about 400 children, just to give you an idea. Our staff stays relatively the same. We do add some special education staff. We lose some, we gain some, but our staff really has not gone up that much over the last few years. Next slide. Now, this is, we are in a category in a state of what is called K-12 districts of 3,500 students and more. And every year, we sort of think about, should we put these slides in or not? And I really think they're important, and we kept them in to give you an idea. New Jersey, comparative spending guidance, right out of the State Department for '08-'09 district administrative data. Number of students per administrator, you can see, we are far, far above the level of the rest of the state. We're 10th ranked from the bottom. That means there are 95 other districts that their average is much higher per administrator, which basically means, much lower, which basically means that they have more administrators. The second one is faculty to administrator. You can see, once again, we're much higher, and we're 17th ranked. Next slide. This is the number of student support services, which would be your guidance, your child study team. You can see that, once again, we're below the state average. Number of students per teacher, you can see, we're 13.4. We have the state's 12.4. And you can see, our salary is much less, which we're 16th ranked. I think this is a real telling slide. I don't know if you read the record, and some of the papers had per pupil expenditures, and they went down, and they ranked schools. We're 4th from the bottom of 150. We're spending $10,377 per child. That's 76 percent of what the state is spending at $13,600. That's $3,255 below the adequacy level of the state. We are far, far below the state average. In the town that I live in, it's $19,500 per kid. Not even close. Go up to northern Burton County, they're spending anywhere from $15,000 to $19,000. Again, this is if it's split up to $10,377. You can see how it's split up, and I'll even give you the ranking as far as where we sit in all those different categories and how low we are in different areas. And we average anywhere from 80 percent all the way down to 73 percent or 64 percent of what the state spends. Next slide. This is how the rest of the district ranks compared to us. We are, average, this is the districts in Middlesex County that are our size, and this is how we rank. We are by far the most efficiently-run district in this county and are averaging $2,281 per student, less than the rest of the county in our size. So, if you look at that, even Carteret spends more money than we do. And all the way down to some of those states, like the districts like Perth Amboy, that spends 15, and New Brunswick, that spends $16,000 per. So, if you really calculated that $2,281 times the 5,900 students, you come up with, we're about $13.5 million below what the state says we should be spending for Middlesex County. Next. Compared with spending on, once again, we were 6006, 07. We were 5th from the bottom, and for the last two years, we're stuck on 4th. Now, you may say to yourself, that's a pretty good slide. Well, at the end, we'll show you how this hurts us in the long run by not spending what is called adequacy or getting to the levels where we should be. Next slide. We don't know what our state aid is. TBD, to be determined. We have no idea whether we're going to get more state aid or less state aid. Our budget is based on a 0 percent increase. We could lose up to 10 to 15 percent of state aid. Based on our state aid figures, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. DeAndre, our state aid is how much? 21 million? You do the math. If we lose 10 percent, 21 million, that could be $2 million. 15 percent could be $3 million that we would have to cut out of this budget, and those were the things that we talked about in the beginning of those slides. Next one. Here's where we get our revenue from. And again, notice, pretty clear cut, state aid is 0. Local tax levy is only going up 1.90. It could go up to 2 percent. The tax levy is going up $55 when you get to the next slide. These are our appropriations. Once again, our appropriations are going up $990,000. That's a 1.3 percent increase. That's probably the lowest increase of a budget I've ever put together since 1988, when I started doing this. We had 60 percent, 20 percent increases. Now, we're at 1.3, and we're in the draft form. That could go down considerably depending on what our state aid is. And it basically, $55 for a house set at approximately, I believe it's $144,000. Just to go to the next slide, just to give you a comparison. Here's what the taxes were in '06-'07. 202 is the actual after the budget. 208, 2008, '88, 2009, '32, '73, last year, and this year, we're at $55. And it hasn't gone out to the vote yet. If we continue spending less than the per pupil, state adequacy levels, the consequences will be, and this will start to happen, class sizes of 30-plus students and more. I came from a district that had 38 kids in geometry classes, had kindergarten bilingual classes of 38 kids with no aids. We just could not afford to do anything. Fewer AP courses, fewer elective courses offerings. No upgrades in technology, less technology available due to lack of updated infrastructure and equipment, and limited internet access. The more we save, the more we lose our competitive edge. So, this is what we were discussing before. Sometimes we say, let's keep saving, let's keep saving, let's not spend our fair share. What starts to happen is, we can't compete with the other districts, and we start to fall behind. Could you just put on that last slide, the one that I gave you with the file? No, this one. This one is. EXL. Wow. Now, just so that you know, Mr. McEnroe and members of the Board of Education, we've already cut approximately out of this budget because we're, we need to get down to a certain level. And right now, we're at $4.578 million that we've cut out of this budget. And it's anything from supplies to construction, to consumables, and some basic equipment. So, you can see that we've really gone through this budget already. I'm not going to go through the entire thing, but you get an idea of where we're at right now. I'm going to let Mr. DeAndre, who also just briefly discuss the fact that, about what had happened with our governor that just, now with Executive 14, he'll talk a little bit about our surpluses also being dipped into as well.
What currently happened last week was, under the new governor, what he has done is he's taken a look at all the Boards of Education statewide, and more or less has come out with an executive order which basically states that any district that has entered their school year 2009 with excess surplus above 2 percent, normally what you do is you appropriate that money in the following budget cycle. What he has done this year is indicated that that money is going to be removed from your state aid. So, for us, that was $325,000. In addition to that is, he started to look at the Boards of Education as to how much money they have in certain reserve accounts. And what he did on those occasions is he only took 25 percent of those reserve amounts. For us, was about $270,000. So, in total, we're losing this year's state aid of close to $596,000, almost $600,000 in state aid. It's one of the ways that he's using current money that's available without increasing your taxes. There will be a lot of people that argue both sides of it. I personally think it wasn't a bad approach because he did not touch the individual budget of a school district. He's not saying reduce your spending. He's allowing you to spend the money that you have appropriated. He's just saying, take your savings, and instead of saving it for another rainy day, your rainy day has come. Make use of it now and work with it. So, there'll probably be resolutions for the Board in the future to approve those items. There is, you'll probably hear lawsuits that are coming out from other districts. It's all depending on how the Board feels about it. I can tell you that the $325 was going to be used next year. We'll make use of it this year. It doesn't detrimentally have hurt us, so we'll struggle through it. But it's definitely a way of finding money without taxing people, so I think it's not such a bad approach. One thing, when the committee met upon this draft budget, one of our major priorities was to keep class sizes where they were. And these numbers that Dr. Alfonso talked about includes additional staff. We have schools like Eisenhower that at one point was enrolling three students, new students a week. They're influenced by the development across the road, which is still not fully developed. We're anticipating several hundred more students that would come from that development. So, when we look at this, and the state tells us that we are $13 million, was it $13 million under adequacy? What they're saying is that Sable should be spending $13 million more to get what they determine a thorough and efficient education in the state. And I'll be honest with you, I was certainly cognizant of the current economic situation, but I'm not proud of the fact that Sable was the lowest-spending district in the state for our size. And what we do, what we spend, when we even look at a name like Overeem that spends $1,000 plus more a child, that would mean $6 million additional to our budget. So, those are the things that we looked at when we formulated this budget, considering all these things. And the most aggravating thing I think I've done in my life is try to form a school budget in a state of New Jersey when the state doesn't give you any information about how much money you're going to have. And when do we anticipate that information coming?
March 18.
March 18, sorry. That sees our layers, honestly. And then shortly after, we have to have the budget.
They're so delicate. They learn that, don't they?
Absolutely, very good.
Right? Delicate?
If anybody from the public has any questions about the budget now, be mindful, I will open it up again. I just want to continue the meeting for the sake of the students that probably need to go home sometime, reasonable time tonight. So, when we open it up for the public, if there are any questions on the budget that you have, we'll certainly entertain them at that point.
Mr. McEnroe, can I just say, it was a pleasure working with the students today. They came in, and I explained to them what the meeting would be. I said to them, if you feel that you can't come tonight because of the weather, and I would think just about everybody showed up. So, it's a real veteran cap, guys. We appreciate you coming. I'm a little bit nervous. This is the first meeting I've been nervous because I'm such a big audience. I'm sure you guys are making sure that you're taking down good notes, and you'll let me know some of the mistakes that I made.
For the students, I'm looking very forward to next month's meeting, next week, two weeks from now, March 2. So, I'm certain it's probably going to solve some problems that we've been struggling with here for several years. So, I'm really looking forward to it. And for the parents, I appreciate letting your child be involved in this. I think it's going to be a great, great opportunity. Okay, pressing on with this. Yes, Mr. Vishada?
Question. I don't know how this is going to affect our budget, but right now in our Assembly, excuse me, in the Senate, there's a bill posted of allowing parents to take their children or students from one district and put them in another district. It's legislation that's pending. I understand that it's passed a Senate committee. I don't understand how that's going to affect budgets in all towns, or is this their first attempt at regionalization of the school system?
I know as much about that as you do. I don't know.
No, it's just something that I think.
Well, I think that's inevitable to happen.
We're going to have to look into this, how, as an example of taking a student, we'll say from another district, bring him to our district, we can wind up with an overcrowding situation.
Absolutely. I think that you have to consider capacity of your buildings, or anything like that.
I think if you look at one of our policies, I think it deals with that. If we bring anybody in and have a specific tuition rate and so on.
Okay. Under correspondence, everybody should receive the monthly technology, the monthly maintenance, and the weekly construction, the monthly construction manager reports. Anybody have any questions on those? If not, everybody should also receive a copy of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 2. Does anybody have any questions, any deletions or additions to the minutes? If not, I'll take a motion to accept the plot.
I'm over.
Second.
And I do roll call vote.
Mrs. Backdon?
Yes.
Mr. Vishada?
Yes.
DeSaya?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Limbo?
Yes.
Mrs. Stratten?
Yes.
Mrs. Krapp?
Yes, but I'm going to abstain from the meeting from two weeks ago since I wasn't here.
So, you abstain. Mr. McEnroe?
Yes. My favorite part of the meeting, our student council representative, brought by a high school student, Ms. Brittany Wilkie.
Well, for the month of February, we just finished our King of Hearts and our Valentine's Day sale, which made a good amount of money for our profits. And now, we're just starting to really get into like the activities for March. March Madness is a big deal in the high school. It's a week where everyone dresses up in different themes for a different day, and you get class points for every day, depending on how many kids dress up. So, we're coming up with ideas for that. We're also getting ready for Read Across America, which is important for our elementary schools. We go to Truman School, and we dress up, and we read books to the little kids. And also, we're doing the elections for next year's Student Council Board. That's underway, too. Everyone, the campaign will be in April, I think.
So, what would you say to the person that wants to take your position on the Board of Education, put you on the spot?
I would say.
It's the best position on the Student Council.
It's a good one.
Yeah. Got you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Clark, put the words in.
Now, Mrs. Carrie, I understand that you mean it was a very comprehensive report from the parent involvement committee.
I was advised to postpone until next month to defer for the time for the children.
Okay.
So, we will postpone our report until next month. The parent involvement committee meets again on March 6.
Thank you very much. Do we have no attorney's report, district highlights?
None.
None, okay. Dr. Alfonso, will you take us to your report, please?
You paying attention, Jennifer? Where are you? Raise your hand. There she is. She's going to be meeting in two weeks. Poor kid. Okay, first, what was that, Mr. DeAndre?
You were saying the money's on it, she's going to go to bed at 12:00.
I was. He was saying the board might hire her. Probably so. Building and grounds, for the high school, any questions with Section 1, buildings and grounds, the use of the high school over the summer? With none, moving to finance, regular resolutions are A to I. Obviously, J is a federal grant, and the amount is 3.7 million. K and L, penny cash reports. M is a tutorial program for services, for special services. N, please withdraw letter M. It's not ready yet. We're a little overzealous putting it in the report, so please, that will be pulled out, letter N. You're welcome. SAT prep, those of the individuals that will be teaching it.
Mrs. Sutherland, if sometime this week, you just email me with your enrollment history of those classes for the next session, we'd appreciate it.
I will.
P and Q are the director of facilities and buildings and grounds. This is their workshop. Letter R is the transportation, coordinated transportation contract with Middlesex Regional Education Services Commission, that does an excellent job. S is a federal aid for the ARIFunds, which is the stimulus money, and over $1 billion that we are participating. T is the guide for standard operating procedures and internal controls. If you haven't saw me, this is awfully great to read. It's about 900 pages. Mr. DeAndre, let me sit through this. I learned a lot. Thank you, Mr. DeAndre. Appreciate it. V is bilingual psychological evaluation services that we need for special education, the bilingual services. A carryover for non-public schools, I have to thank Mrs. Sutherland. We don't have any carryovers. I know what I used to do, you don't want any carryover. Unfortunately, we have to deal with the non-public schools. What a carryover means is that they didn't spend all their money. So, we spend our money, and we're not giving any back. Non-classified student Middlesex County Academy, and a passenger bus we are in the process of purchasing, lease purchasing.
Dr. Alfonso, if I could, just one comment. At one more meeting, there was a question about legislation for going to 15 years. That legislation did not pass, so this bus will be a 12-year also.
So, buses have to take, have to service 12 years?
12 years. It's still bouncing around.
Regardless of mileage?
Regardless of mileage.
Was this bus in this year's budget?
No, this bus is in next year's. The current buses require as close to $7,000 of repair, so we're not going to do those repairs. We're getting this bus, but postponing the payment to the new budget here.
So, it's in '10-11 year payment?
So, the state's idea of saving us money is to make, take our buses out of commission three years earlier than what was proposed?
Again, that's always been 12. There are a few buses out there for 15, but they're real strict guidelines that are tough to me, but right now, it's 12.
Mr. McEnroe?
Yes.
Was Mr. DeAndrea said is correct, but that legislation is being reintroduced in both the house and senate?
Still floating around. Any question, any other questions with section two?
I have a question.
Mr. Backo?
Mr. Backo?
The bill list, there was a check to the auditor on the bill list for eighteen hundred dollars, it said for the annual audit, is this a correction, or?
No, what we do is, in order to avoid waiting for them to come in and do the audit of the district enrollment, what we've done over the last few years, we bring them in right after Ms. Sutherland's complete, so they're doing the audit while all the information is ready, readily available and fresh, so the eighteen hundred dollars represents just that portion of the audit.
The SSA part of the enrollment.
Mr. DeAndrea, I need to abstain on the check for New Jersey School Boards Association, on the bill list.
I have another question. S, the federal aid resolution, I read it, I'm not, if you could just explain what it is that we're agreeing to here? I know this is ARIFunds for last year, so we're asking that we want more funds this year?
Yes. We want, we keep, we want to be part of the program.
We want to be part of the program that exists, or we want them to redo the program again?
Both. We want to continue the program, and we want to be part of it.
So, in other words, I guess, here's my question. I look at it as this program that they're doing on the federal level, they just keep spending money that they don't have, so by doing this, I'm agreeing to let's increase the United States debt?
Yes.
To enhance the financial situation.
But if we don't, but if we don't, we give that money back and somebody else is going to track that.
You also, you have to keep in mind, this past year, almost three million dollars of your state aid was utilized through our funding. So if we lose that ARIFunding from the federal government, you stand the potential of losing three million dollars of state aid. This is, this is very important, that you support this, and this was the resolution that came to us from Washington Township, who started the initiative in sending it out statewide, so.
Did we do this last year?
No.
We didn't do this resolution?
If you recall, the ARIFunding was notified to the school districts after you adopted your budgets, that you had to set aside for us three million dollars, and we're, there's thought that they may take away that funding. So that's three million dollars that we're not anticipating at this point in time, so resolutions of this type are important to the state of New Jersey, since the way they utilize the ARIFunding.
So where does this resolution go after we've?
I have a list of legislators and senators to send it on to.
So this is just common, that all local districts have to do this?
I'm assuming it was a mass mailing, so it was Washington Township.
T, I know you may not have thought of this all, but I would like, is that important that we pass this tonight? I would like to read it, and I just would like to ask you to send the document home of that magnitude on a Friday for me to vote on it Tuesday, it's a little tough for me to get through.
I apologize.
I would like to review it before I vote on it.
There's nothing pressing at this point in time, all I do ask is that if you have questions, just speak to me ahead of time. It's a, it was a document that was prepared by my association, that was asked to be adapted to each individual district, so it took time to make sure going through that it meets to what our requirements are. Kind of, it's a, was really used as a template for the state.
In other words, you want to table?
I don't have a problem with it, but I just ask.
Thank you.
Please just talk to us about it.
Mr. Backo?
This is exactly what he did to me with that, with that document.
Mr. Backo, why don't you make a motion to table it?
Make a motion to table, letter T?
Second motion.
Okay.
Can we explain what that means?
Yes.
Are the ladies and gentlemen in the audience understand what we're doing right now?
Yes, when the board tables something, we're pulling it from the agenda, we're not going to take any action on it, and we're going to study it, and then we will put on a subsequent agenda, that means an agenda down the road, another meeting, when we feel that we're more informed about it, then we will vote on it. So tabling, it means that we're actually taking out the agenda, and we will not vote on it tonight.
Thank you, Mr. McEnroe. Jen, you got that? Where are you? This is your section, Jen, remember, two and three. Who's got number one? Where's Mr. DeAndrea? Is he here? She's here, right? All females, right? You remember, you're section number one, right? Okay.
All right, so I have, I have Mrs. Backo table at a second, and I need to roll call vote.
Mr. Backo?
Yes.
Mr. Vishada?
Yes.
Mr. Syak?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Lumbow?
Yes.
Mrs. Stratten?
Yes.
Mrs. Trapp?
Yes.
And Mr. McEnroe?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Backo.
Any others for section two?
I have one more question. This is more a generic question, if you look at letter U, and then there's another one, we've been doing these at every meeting, hiring these so-called firms and.
This used to be back in the other section.
Right, can you just explain why we?
I'll have Mr. DeAndrea explain that, because he really got honest.
I guess to why we keep doing it every month, instead of, we didn't do it in, at the beginning of the year?
Well, go ahead, Mr. DeAndrea.
What's the new, part of the new calendar we're required, requiring that all professional services be advertised, solicited proposals, and then approved by, as a professional service contract. And what Ms. Duffy has done is, some of these services are services that we've approved other people for, and she finds others at a better rate, so she brings them on. So any opportunity to save the district money, we're doing that, or if a special service is needed, we're trying to make sure we meet the regulations. The hope is for next year is to have all of these resolutions appear at one board meeting, but again, some of these items are specialties, and I know Mrs. Duffy doesn't like the rules and regs of having to do this each time now, but the accountability regs require that anyone as a professional service be approved by a separate resolution.
Okay, so, for example, if you just looked at U, for example, it says a bilingual history evaluation, but it says July one, two thousand and nine. So was this firm working here since July, or is somebody else was, or?
We've just used the template, this has been a template resolution for the year.
So was no one working in that position since July?
No, and these are consultants who we use on, as a basis, and the person or the firm that did it before was probably about fifty percent higher in their price, but when I found out about these people and their quality as well, I had them approved. So when Amideo says it's on an evolving basis, it is, and I would prefer that they all be approved in September, but, you know, I can't pass up somebody good at a better rate.
Right, so the fact that we're hiring them tonight means that we have not needed their services?
We have, no, we've needed services, but we've used the services of whoever has been approved already, and the reason it says nine tenants for that academic year.
Okay, so if, when we approved someone before, we didn't approve them for a year?
Yes, we did, but we don't solely use them, we don't use them exclusively.
Any other questions with section two? With none, moving to section three, personnel not certified. We have unpaid medical leave, some employment, individuals, professional days, and on your addendum, there is one addendum for unpaid family leave of absence. Any questions with section three? Section four, personnel certified. I just want to make a comment, Ms. Ryan has been with us many, many years, I don't want to put a number on it, because I'll get in trouble, but she's been a loyal, trustworthy, very hardworking gym teacher for many, many years in this district, and I wish her a lot of luck and a lot of health and happiness. B is a pregnancy leave, some more employment of new staff, replacing some maternity leaves, et cetera, professional days. E, our coaching aides, unpaid teacher substitutes. Any questions with section four? With none, moving to five, we have eight different policies, and remember, Ms. Sutherland, next week we'll be approving for the first reading, four new ones that obviously you'll be working with your student rep. This, this time around, we will be approving thirty-five, ten, which is operations and maintenance of the plant. I know Mr. Syak has a correction, which we'll, I'll get to, just let me get through these. Then on page seventeen is policy three thousand, which is concepts and roles in business and instructional, non-instructional operations, goals and objectives. Just bear with me. Thirty-four fifty-one is petty cash funds. Five-one-one E is non-residents, and that's what you were referring to, Mr. Vishada, so there is something in there about tuition students. Safety is on page twenty-four, thirty-five sixteen. Thirty-six hundred is the evaluation of business and non-instructional operations. And fifty-one forty-five point twelve is searches and seizures, and again, these are just revisions to the existing policies, and fifty-one forty-one is health, and I believe that's the last one. Now I know, is it the last one?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Syak, can you just tell me where it is that you wanted me to make those few changes?
Yeah, just two cleanup notes, on the first policy, the one, two, the fourth paragraph, you'll see.
What page?
Page twelve. You'll see a note in all caps, it says note the following section applies to districts with three or more district buildings. We don't need the note, because we are a district with three or more.
I'll omit that.
So that comes out, and then the same type of thing on page number eighteen, in all caps, is a note that it applies to districts that have a budget in excess of twenty-five million. That's just a note to us when we alter the policy.
I will also omit that, thank you, Mr. Syak. Any other questions, policy?
When these things are highlighted.
Those are all notes.
Who picks the colors?
Unfortunately, they all look the same when I was doing it, because they come out that way.
The dark colors and the dark text.
I wanted to keep you on your toes. There is no such thing as green for me, all right?
Because, we know why.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right, Vishada.
If you use yellow throughout every.
You know what it is, some of the stuff, in all honesty, was already highlighted for me, and it was in there, and then I just used my highlight, and I'll try to remember that the next time.
I have a question.
Yes.
On page twenty-seven, in the green on the top, it mentions that, if it's green, it's new, correct?
Yes.
And it referenced a detailed organizational chart. Do we have something currently?
Yes.
Would it be possible to get a copy?
The organizational chart? It's in the, it's in your audit.
It's in the big book, the cap.
And if this has, I know, I have received, I received an organizational chart here years back, I remember I'd asked for one, this, is this new, the one I received was very high level, is that, this, the way the word detailed was added, I thought it was something?
Yes, it's not that detailed.
It's not that detailed?
Not that detailed, no. It's your, it's the one that you.
It's the one that I got.
Yes.
And one other question, page thirty-two, this one's green too. On the bottom, this is where it says, this is for the, it says, all these staff members document, whoever created the training will be authorized using AED. Is, is there a list somewhere of who these staff members are, and is every coach qualified? Is every coach trained? No, they're not. Nurses are trained, all the nurses are trained, and the, the athletic trainer's trained, and the athletic trainer is at most worth of us. At most worth of us, but sometimes, you know, he, I mean, he does float around. Is there any future plan of having coaches be trained on these, so that there could be one at a game? All the coaches are trained in CPR, they're all CPR certified, but the use of this machine is fairly, well, complicated.
And it's volunteer, by NJSA.
It depends on the machine too, right, Curtis? I mean, some, some machines are automatically doing it almost themselves, and others, others are difficult to use, I mean, it depends on what you had, I saw one that was almost like, it went step by step and did it for you. And then there was others that, I'm assuming you really got to kind of know what you're doing.
The ones that we have were the ones that were donated by the freeholders, and I think, yeah, I think they're six or seven years old already. So can I? You know what my suggestion would be, though, I mean, you really want to encourage anybody on the scene to be able to use it? I mean, I, I, you know, it has happened in schools where kids do collapse, and to wait for a responder, I mean, it's important to get somebody there the first few minutes. I mean, typically, these machines are set so a young child could work them, I mean, they're really that easy.
Yeah, some of them.
Know that we want to restrict it, to say. It's not restricted, and I know that there are a whole lot of volunteers, right?
We, we're in agreement with you, I mean, we certainly would, some, certain, certain staff members won't touch it, they're afraid of it. I mean, there's other people that would jump right on it, and, and are trained in it, there's a lot more people than we think that are trained in it. And we certainly have no problem with that, but at the same time, I'd rather somebody who's comfortable, God forbid, if we needed to use it. I know where I live, they have one in the, in the lobby, in the foyer, and they trained everybody, and it was amazing how easy it was to use, but I know, and God forbid, if something happens, you know, it's not going to be that easy.
Well, it talks to you.
Yeah, it tells you what to do.
Now, my understanding was that all coaches needed to be AED certified?
It was strictly voluntary.
No, it's CPR certified.
CPR.
There's a difference.
And we could talk more about that, but I know Ms. Sutherland is very much on top it out with the nurses, so that could be something.
Well, I guess if we have these machines that are, you consider difficult to use, or they're six years old, then I think we should consider getting, I remember, I remember seeing them when we were at the convention, and they called them idiot-proof, pretty much, so, I mean, maybe we need to look into getting machines like that, so that our coaches would feel comfortable using them, because I think it's important that we have them.
We could look into that.
Any other questions for section five? With none, moving to six, curriculum. Who's our curriculum? Oh, she's not here, Ms. Baumann, your, your.
I know, my person.
Your person is not here, unfortunately, but she'll, she'll be ready to roll, thanks. And hopefully, we'll, we'll have an update for her also, Ms. Baumann, because we don't think we're approving any curriculum at the next meeting, but I'm certain you'll have an update with that. Special services, there's some placements and various services in this section. Any questions with, on page thirty-five or thirty-six in section six? With none, moving to seven, co-curriculum. There are a number of functions going on at all at school. There's also a student basketball game at the high school, there's the National Honor Society induction ceremony, which is probably one of the nicest ceremonies and nicest functions that we go to all year long. I was looking for the spaghetti dinner, but I'm not sure when that is, they're using Mr. Brown Mason, I'm wondering if they're having it this year. Then there are some other activities that are going on at the high school, the, Mr. Kraft is also doing something on June fourth, family quiz show, Sam's Upper Elementary School, Wilson Elementary School runs its fiesta, which is very, very nice in April, and Decker State Conference Career Program is for the, Mr. Peter Gibbs is the twenty-fourth to twenty-sixth, a very nice dinner, which is the Student Recognition Banquet, which is March third, for two very, very excellent students that will be attending that program. Any questions with section seven?
Just a note on the student recognition, that the board is invited to that, there is no cost to the board, it's being picked up by private donations to the Middlesex County School Boards Association and Association of School Administrators. If you could register with Amideo by next Friday, because forms need to be.
We should have representation, does anyone plan on going to the board? Do we have a board representative? Mr. Syak and Mr. Clark?
It's a really nice function.
It is very.
So that's a fine. Section eight, support services, these are basic, three trips, and a organization that's asking to use our buses. That concludes my report, Mr. McEnroe.
For the student board members, what happens now, after the superintendent goes to his report for the board, we open it up for the public, and anybody in the public that wants to come and ask any questions about what we just talked about, and that's important that we listen to them before we make our vote on whether we approve the items that we just talked about. So at this time, for members of the public, I'd like to open up for the public, for gender items only, I will open up again for the public for any business that may be coming before the board. So at this time, if anybody from the public would like to come up and ask any questions or comments about the agenda, and also includes the budget presentation we gave early tonight, please come up, state your name and address for the record. Anybody from the public? Okay, if no one from the public, so we'll close the public portion, and I'll entertain a motion to accept and file this superintendent's report. So. Okay. Mr. DeAndrea, you go.
Mrs. Backo?
Yes.
Mr. Vichada?
Yes.
Sayak?
Yes, with the abstention notice.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Lumbah?
Yes.
Mrs. Stratt?
Yes, with the exception of the policy on health, I still, I'm not in agreement with only authorized personnel to use AED.
I'll make a note. So you're abstaining on the health policy?
Abstaining or voting no?
Voting no.
Voting no.
Yes to all others. Mrs. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. McInerney?
Yes. Now what the board does, if there's any background information, that is information that perhaps we talked about at the last meeting, and we wanted to follow up with any additional information, or anything that may have come up between the last meeting and this meeting that needs to come before the board. So I'll ask the board members at this time if there is any information for background that warrants our discussion this evening.
Question?
Mrs. Backo. Who is representing Mrs. Backo next week? Okay, you have to ask a lot of questions. Yes, Mrs. Backo?
Don't worry, I'll work with you.
Yes.
Status for Phase 1 on the building for the paperwork for the CEO?
I cannot get a clear answer out of the building department at this point in time as to exactly what is required for the CEO for Phase 1. I sent over the request, they told me they will review it. We sent over what we believe is required. I'm still waiting on a confirmation from the building department, not only on just Phase 1, but Phase 2, 3, 3A, or whatever you want to call it.
Right, but the paperwork for Phase 1, that was the November, that was the June deadline, and then became the July deadline?
Again, that, when, my understanding is that paperwork has been submitted, but I have not gotten that confirmation back, that that's.
So it's recently been submitted, so.
Several months ago, from when I'm told.
Several months ago?
Yes. But there are other issues that I'm being told, though the CEO is still sitting out there. I'm trying my best to narrow it down to that list that was sent to the board, I believe, three weeks ago, that indicated all the items we believe are required. I'm still waiting for the building department to respond, yes or no, these are the only items required.
CEO is a certificate. What more do they need than the fact that we've been in the building for about two years and everything works well? What more do they need?
They were looking for paperwork.
Obviously, the biggest thing they're looking for is the actual, as, they call it, the asphalt drawings that reflect the true building after change orders and other design issues.
Sounds like something the architect should provide.
Correct.
Yes, which they have. Although, believe it or not, the asphalt are required by the, actual contractors are required to submit the asphalt.
Yeah, but they get them from the architect. They get them from the architect.
No.
They build themselves off the plans that the architect provided.
They're required to take the plans that we, and alter them and make the modifications.
Have they done that to you?
My understanding, yes, that has been done.
Okay. There's just something, I get that feeling when we talk about plans that have been sitting in the construction office for a long time. It just brings back.
Bad memories.
Bad memories.
That's why we're trying to push to get this initiated and move forward. We are at the back end of this project.
If you could follow up with your counterpart on the other side of town, perhaps?
I've spoken to Kirk Mick several times already.
His boss?
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
One other thing, I do, if you could just pass this on, I did notice the meeting minutes were on the website. If you could thank Lorraine for getting that done.
Yes, and they're actually called minutes, too. That was a nice change.
They learned that term.
Yes.
To McInerney.
Minutes, and that means to do it in minutes. Very nice. Okay. At this point, we have a representative, the board has a representative that's a delegate to the New Jersey School Boards Association, which is Association of all the boards event in the state of New Jersey. And our delegate is Mr. Curtis Clark, and he usually briefs us on what's going on in the state that may affect Sabo. Clark?
And where's mine? Their Suknarkum is going to be me next week. So I'm going to write to you a very good website that all students can look at called What they are, as Mr. McInerney said, is our umbrella group, which represents over 600 school board members, school boards. Some have five members, some have seven members, some have nine members, but they represent us in Trenton and on the federal level, on things that are important to education that we receive. So real quickly, just three things. Mr. DeAndrea touched on the governor's cuts. They amounted to $475 million total. The jury's still out on what's going to happen. There is going to be some lawsuits on it, so stay tuned for that. The final budget of how schools are going to be operated will be on March 18th. We're once again really waiting for that. And New Jersey School Board Association is currently putting together a slate of new officers to take us into the 2010-2011 school year. Middlesex County was well-represented this year with the president being from South Brunswick, Harry Dogado, who is just a very nice man and a captain from the police department, and our immediate past president, our old Mr. Kevin Sayak, who donated and volunteered